All right, it's five thirty on. I just pulled a gesture. So it's five thirty on April third, twenty twenty-three. This is the time set for the special meeting regarding properties. As we can. I don't think that there's any modifications to this agenda. No. We'll just go into the new business, which is property assessments. The first time I've had to do one of these meetings, so.
So we're gonna have Leah Heidi from the county assessor's office.
Good evening, Commission. Thank you so much for having me tonight. I am Leah Heidi. I am from the local assessor's office. I am your local assessor for the city of Tioga. I have with me tonight Christie Gutierrez. She is the commercial assessor for the city of Williston, but she helps me when it comes to the apartment. Values and setting those and helping me work through those. Her market in Williston is much more bigger than mine, so I like to bounce. Ideas and information off of her, and I like her to attend so that she can answer any of those types of questions with ease. So in front of you, you have your purple two thousand twenty-three City of Tioga report book. And we're just gonna kind of go through here. If at any point you have any questions, concerns, comments, please just stop me and we will answer those questions as we move along here. There will be a portion where we will open it up to public comment from anyone that is in attendance. Okay, so page number one, you'll see that this is your two thousand twenty-two mill levy rate and all that is entailed in that. Mill levy breaks down your state, your county, what the city is taking apart, school district, vector Harrison, and then the soil district, and it breaks it all down for you. So page number two is kind of my overview and assessment processes and procedures. So each year we check the city and the county. And we have to look at all of those sales and we have to look at them yearly. So what we use is the sales or sale assessment ratio, and it is a statistical measure of the actual assessment to the actual sales price. This year, the state order of equalization and every year, they consider a ratio that exceeds ninety but is below a hundred percent to be the actual true and full. So the time and periods for the assessment are very important. We're always a year behind. So when I'm looking at two thousand twenty-three's values, we are looking at information from January first of two thousand twenty-two to December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-two. So in our sales analysis, we try and look at if a property is higher or lower than that actual sale. We try to contact the buyer and find out if there are any continuing circumstances or conditions or something special about that sale. And we try to reject any sale that is not an arm-length transaction. So that could be a family sale, not offered on the open market. An unknown major remodel or complete gut and remodel it. It can be any one of those things. Unfortunately, sometimes getting that kind of information is difficult for us, and we have to accept some sales just as they are. So in two thousand twenty-two, we are looking at twenty-nine usable sales in the city of Tioga. And our median ratio for this year was ninety-four point five three percent. We use different aspects to make our analysis. We look at your builds, square footage, styrofoam construction, condition, location. All of those things go into our analysis when we're looking at these sales and these values. For your commercial, we have thirty-six usable sales across the county. Because the city is not big enough, I have to look at the whole county's commercial, and you are lumped in with them for your commercial. We had thirty-six sales, and so there was no need to go back to a previous year. And there was actually no change because our overall commercial ratio was ninety-one point four eight percent. All apartments are done on the income approach. This is where we send out a questionnaire. We hope for information back, and we use the information that's returned to us to create a model for those apartments. I had one returned notification this year, and that was purely by accident. Christie had notified somebody in her area, and they sent everything, which included the one in Tioga. So we had a different type of model this year. We have twenty-three apartments. Out here in Tioga, and with one returning, I had to look at different avenues to create my income model. I called several apartment complexes, spoke with the managers on duty, and got information that way. I think I was able to speak to about four complexes and was able to garner enough information to make a viable market analysis. Although I don't have expenses in that scenario, we did use the city of Williston's expenses. It seemed like expenses were very similar for the one party I had returning. And then we used a market adjusted cap rate across the board or our income approach. We continue to give all of the hotels and motels in Tioga a thirty percent OXO. We just don't see enough sales for us to make any clear defined differences or changes there. And then if you have any oil or gas producing facilities, they are done each year by Thomas Y. Pickett. Manufactured homes are taxed a little bit differently. They are on a permit system when an individual owns the home, but not the land it sits on. So like in a park. The total responsibility for the assessment of manufactured home lies within our, our office. And they are assessed in December of each year based on the previous year's market as well. Tax statements are computed and sent out in December, and then they have to, they're on the same schedule. They have to pay by February. There are only forty-five mobile homes in the city of Tioga this year that are on this permit system. So my recommendations are to leave each class as presented today with the increases that you will see that we've set this year. So I always like to give you guys a snapshot. So if you turn to page six, give you just a quick little clip of what happened this year. So countywide sales, we were at ninety-one point four eight. So we didn't have much of a change there. Tioga residential ratio was at ninety-five point nine with twenty-five, twenty-six usable sales. I must have dropped one there. Mobile homes are the most concerning this year, and you will see that number is very significant. Because we re-analysed, re-analyzed every single mobile home in the county, there's no way to know, and this is the generalized increase. Some mobile homes in the city of Tioga went down, some went up, because we did re-analyze and really looked at everything. And re-included our information to re-assess them this year. Anything made built before two thousand remained the same. There were no changes. Anything built after two thousand had a ten percent increase, and Tioga townhomes increased about sixty-one percent. And we had two hundred and thirty-one notices sent for this year's assessment season. There is a little bit of agricultural lands. On page seven, it kind of breaks down exactly how markets. How we're not using market for our ag land. We are using a cap rate, ag land production and cost of productivity index for all ag land. Or agricultural land within the city. All of this information is sent to us by the NBSU and NRCS. And they give us all that information. We get new numbers from the state, and we have to be in compliance, just like any other, but it's not assessed at market. It is assessed at the sort of. As always, I don't like to talk about taxes, but inevitably, that's what we talk about here. The basis of a property tax system is you have a budget evaluation and taxation. So when you're looking at those taxes, just because your value is increasing or decreasing doesn't mean that those taxes are actually going to increase or decrease. It really just depends on what the budget and everything that goes into that budget requires. And then if you look at the bottom, you can see that a hundred thousand dollar residential house based on last year's mill levy would give you a bill of seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty-two cents. Page nine is your overall assessment balance. So this is the total assessment balance in the city of Tioga. And it breaks it down for you via agricultural, residential land, the structure, commercial land, and the commercial structure. The next couple of pages are just information for you guys. Page number ten is the changes in true and full values. So this is what, what really jumped or changed within the year. So we had ag land decreasing and residential land and commercial land. Really residential is the one that jumped the most. We had a little bit of decreasing in residential. You had residential structures increasing almost two million, a couple of decreases there, not a lot. And then your commercial land increased about seventy-five thousand, decreased over four hundred and thirty thousand. And then you have that commercial building increasing about three hundred and ninety-eight and decreasing one point two. And those are just the changes that happen within the city. Page eleven is your residential sales. So this is what we use to look at and decide what our. Our areas need to do, whether they come up, they need to come down, or we need to keep them the same. And these are the sales that we use within that process. The next one is page twelve, and this is our specific areas. So your Tioga mobile homes, your pre-year post, and your Tioga townhomes, even after. We try to get that median within that ninety to a hundred percent. With Tioga mobile homes, we didn't actually increase them for the sales, because we have two. But because we updated information and we updated what we had, you're seeing those increases across. Page thirteen is your apartments, and this is the amount of change that each apartment received. So some apartments, you can see, were four percent, some were sixteen, some were eighteen. It just depended on how many units that apartment complex had. And the information I had on hand. Some places did not call me back. I did not get some information from several locations. But unfortunately, can't make any changes without information. Fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen are your homestead credit, your DAV, and your privilege exemptions. Just a few notes on homestead credit. We had one fall off because she quit claiming the property. They have to own it to be able to receive that homestead credit. For DAV, I don't believe we had any changes this year. And then privilege exemptions. I did want to bring it to you guys' attention. I have not received any communication from Bach and Community Connections. No application, no callbacks, no nothing. I will be having to take them to the county level and put them back on the tax rolls unless I receive that. Privilege exemption application. Everyone that has a privilege exemption within the county has to submit those applications, and we have to have them on file to allow the exemption. They possibly might be falling off unless I get their paperwork. Next several pages, so seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one are the summary of parcels receiving a notice. So this is everyone that received a notice in the city of Tioga. And the information for. What their change was for the year. We do that all after the public speaks. So we'll have them do those findings and go back to those at that time. We'll start back at fourteen after the public. So at this point, I don't have anything else. Do you guys have any questions or comments before we open it up? No? Okay, I'll sit down and we can.
All right, so.
Yeah.
I'll open it up to the public for any questions, comments, or concerns regarding. What was presented.
Hi, Chief. How you doing? Wayne's listening there. I'm asking about mine there. I just assumed it did get increased to thirty thousand. And that's. Now it will. Bring my total paid to the city all combined. Like when we add on another, whatever it is, three to five hundred extra hours, pay him seventy-five to the city of the county. So I'm asking, well, of course, you're not the city, but I am. I'm asking for it.
Just, just for your health.
So I'm sorry, I had a hard time hearing. Is this a residential property or a commercial, or what do we got?
Residential.
Okay.
Over ten percent of mine. So it's almost thirty. Was it in the paper, bulletin paper, that you guys are over assessing or something? What was that, a month ago or something?
I don't know. I don't follow what the paper writes.
Well, yeah, it was in there not, not that long ago, but. Yeah.
So I couldn't see that. I don't know. I'm sure you, we do. We will be making statements within the statutes that are set by the state, because you have to require me to be able to have to act as certified, then we will follow the required. So over assessing is pretty much impossible on a mass scale.
Oh, you guys should look at a checklist.
I know. I definitely will talk our tax rights and offer about that later. So if you look at page eleven of your report, you will see that pre-two thousand, which is what Queen's Home is. There are sales all the way from being sixty-six percent all the way up to being a hundred and forty-nine percent. That's probably where this increase is coming from. It is just an increase across the board from sales that are showing that it needed. You have every right to make any changes that you feel you need.
What was the numerical amount of the increase? I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time finding Wayne's listing here, and I want to make sure I'm looking at the, the right one. What was the differential between taxes last year and this year as a figure, a proposed figure? It was how much?
Twenty-eight thousand, yeah, twenty-two, thirty, right? Yeah. And it's on page nineteen was.
Okay.
About midway.
Okay. So I guess what I'm asking, though, is a little bit different. I'm not asking about the valuation. I understand that you ladies, I think, had told us the amount per hundred thousand. But what was the actual increase in the amount that Wayne would have to pay? I see the change in value for the true and fair. Um, but I.
That is not surely a number we will not be able to give you because mill levies haven't been set for the new year. They will be set. So I can't even guess as to what that number would be.
Okay, I think that's probably an important, important question for Wayne, but if you don't know the answer and you can't tell us, that's fair.
But if you can look, I mean, his class of house, the median ratio is only ninety-three point five eight percent. It's actually the lowest increase in Tioga or the lowest ratio in Tioga, even after the increase. And the problem is just those sales are showing that this valuation, it had to be increased. You know, we cannot be out of compliance. We try to keep these ratios pretty fair across the board, as fair as we possibly can. If you can look, he's got the lowest ratio in the entire country at ninety-three point five eight. So unfortunately, I do understand, and nobody wants to see an increase in their assessment. I don't like it either, but this one, I think, is. It's, it's the lowest even out of the overall ratio. The overall ratio for Tioga is ninety-four point five three percent. So I do understand, and I don't, I would have wanted to do that.
Basically, you guys are stuck with the statutory instructions, and I think maybe what you're suggesting to Wayne is that you don't have. When the state legislature tells you how you must assess and within what ranges and under what procedures, you don't have, even if you feel great sympathy for the people that suffer the increases. You don't really have the individual or internal authority to deviate from those things. Is that kind of a fair summary of what I'm understanding?
That's correct. And maybe even, you know, to take the side of the state just a little bit, they are trying to make sure that there is overall fairness, because. Even the state doesn't decide what type of taxes are billed. That's what your statutory government or, you know, budgetary guidelines set. And all this is trying to make sure that those taxes are spread evenly across as much as they possibly can. So. Just, you know, keep in mind the values do not practically set taxes. Decide what's going to be sure.
Wayne, we realize you're protesting, and, you know, protesting taxes is kind of the American way, and so I don't think anybody's going to fault you for that. Country was kind of founded on that principle, actually, but. What are, do you have a specific proposal or a specific inquiry or specific information which you think makes this assessment incorrect? Could you share that if you know it?
Well, no, the house is, it's a nineteen fifty-six. It's not built, you know, ten years ago either.
We do show in nineteen fifty-six, one thousand three hundred and twenty-four. With a forty. So the other key things that would help or change your assessment is any type of bathrooms in the, in the home, and I have two full baths. And then if you have basement finish, which I do have four hundred square feet of finished basement.
So out of curiosity, where do you guys get your, so is that from like the permits and stuff that are received and stuff like that?
For the most part, on this property, at some point in the past, was actually physically measured by somebody in our office. Since it was a fifty-six, it's probably a while, a while. And it looks like we basically retake that property record card and carry that forward. Leah actually came out and walked Tioga. Two years ago, three years ago.
Yes, three years ago.
And verifying all of this data was accurate at that time. We tried to be on about four to five year rotations. So in about a year, maybe two, which will probably coming out in a minute again, but that's what we maintain we're accurate, because overall, we're an area that we check. To verify that the footprint on the building hasn't changed. Only monitoring that fire reports. If that gets something to happen, if there's a fire or something, and keep up on that. And then yes, building permits, I guess, come out of there. And I do watch the paper in case of things like a fire or a flood or anything like that that would happen. So I am very diligent with all of the information to make sure I have things as correct as possible. And I'm always willing to come back out and relook at a home, re-measure a home, or go through a home. Because I don't know how correct that information is. I don't always get into the buildings all the time, so I have to go on the information I can.
Right. Okay, so. Let's just, we can see testing. Do we have to have a motion on somehow?
Or anything, sorry.
Right, okay, so everybody heard what Mr. Comington is protesting here. Is there a motion for any of the?
At the end of the day, I mean, this evaluation is still mobile. We wouldn't sell the house. I wouldn't sell mine. So I think that, I think it's fair. I love it. All is amazing, but.
So you want to make a motion to do the thing?
Yeah, I'd make that motion.
All right, with the motion. Okay, the motion and the second to keep it the same. There isn't any questions, comments, or concern from the board? We'll move to vote.
Yes.
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 Well, thanks for your time.
One, or, evening, evening. My name is Rick Burrow, and I just have two questions, more informational than anything. And you may have answered, but. On my tax saving here for the counting the net effective tax rate, is that the, excuse me, the mill person you're talking about? That would be.
No, that is your taxes back against your value is your net effective tax rate. This is what your actual taxes are, and so this is just a percentage of what your value is compared to.
So what makes that go up? So three years ago, one property, I have six point six seven to seven, seven to seven, seven. This one was point three to point seven, seven, point six.
It is a combination of both numbers. It is a combination of your mill and your value. So if your value stays the same and your mill increases, your percentage is going to change, I would believe. Correct? Correct. So the effective tax rate is just the effect percent. So your effective tax rate will be the same for any house or any house that has the same acting that's ready to do will all have that same effective tax rate. So what's going to cause that to increase in the budgetary? Any of the, either the list of all of the jurisdictions. Any of them that would increase their budget would increase that effective percentage. And so that would happen, you know, with budgetary, various of their health later in late summer, early fall. Sorry, bear with me. I believe it happens later on August, so it's like three months, correct? But that's where those. You should get a note. So what they do for budgetary, they send you a notice letting you know what your estimated tax base would be, or your estimated tax statement would be. And at the bottom of that, they really close you with a budgetary. And all of the, any public entity that is acting authority must hold a public hearing. And at that point, you are always welcome to attend those and clarify how the, how the money is being allocated. So, you know, the fire department should have one where they're doing. Where they're allocating that money.
So that will determine the percentage of increase, how much more, I'll add the pain of that change.
Yes, right, and that is actually, so any of those, any of those jurisdictions that increase would change your effective tax rate. Assuming that there was a value to be, you know, also decrease to actually some taxes that happen. Assuming that there were the value that we give, you know, also the increase is actually some taxes that happen that the value can increase if they don't. A higher level of income. Um, that can actually cause your tax bill go down, not often, but it can happen.
Okay, thank you. And then I guess my second question is, do you only receive this, I guess I own three properties and I only received. Two letters of increase. Does that mean my third property is not being increased or increased by less than a certain percentage?
But less of a certain percentage. So we're required to send out notices for anybody that receives an increase of. Uh, ten percent and three thousand dollars above what their last year's was. If we can certainly look at your third property.
Yes. Uh, I don't know the person, I'm not going to read the address.
Okay, oh, perfect.
Actually, I can.
Well, actually, I want to look it up by your last page. So which two do you have there?
One, ten.
What is?
Four, six, three, four, five, seven, 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 this might notice increase.
Actually, this.
That's all I have, is just those two for information. Thank you. There's no possibility of these numbers changing, period. Go so like with what you have, like.
The assessments?
Right.
Um, so there is no possibility for our office to change for the sudden clear now at a point where only boards of equalization may change, may be changes. So you would, if you could make a change. Um, the county could make a change or the state could make a change. It would be clear out of that.
So from my information, you said that there was another, another hearing.
There are three hearings for, well, that's a bit different. So there's three hearings for this specific process.
Right.
Your meeting today, the county meeting in June, and then the state meeting in August. The meeting I was speaking about previously is a budgetary hearing.
Right.
And that happens sometime in August and September. Yes, Abby knows exactly what I'm talking about. Is it September, October? Yeah, so that budgetary happens September, October. And then we, the treasurer's office sent out a estimated tax statement to let. Every property owner in the county know when those budgetary hearings are happening.
Thank you.
Yes.
Alright, that. Are we running? Those are the people that are attending.
Okay, um, if you had any changes you wanted to make, now would be that time. Um, if not, then we'll go to page fourteen and we'll move through our homestead credits. The A V is um privileged and then we'll move on to our corrections and I did not receive any formal protests this year, so.
Alright. Alright, so on page fourteen was the homestead credit. Is there a motion?
Yes.
We'll do this again.
Homestead credit?
I can't remember if that's a.
Um, so homestead credit is something that the state offers to any resident within the state under quota. And they have to be under a certain um income requirement and over a certain age. So if you're sixty-five years and older. And you make less than forty-two thousand, um, it it's a sliding percentage. So if you make forty-two, it's ninety percent. And anything down to twenty-two percent, at twenty-two percent, you're a hundred percent on the homestead credit, which is a hundred percent of the credit that they offer, which I believe is. Five thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars and so on. Um, I don't have any of the actual pamphlets with me, so I don't know that number exactly. Um, but anybody over the age of sixty-five or they're just able to get a uh physician's certificate can apply for this. And so they have to live in the home and they have to own it. So if you only own fifty percent of the home, you only get the credit on fifty percent of the home. And as you can see, some of the people who apply only have a percentage and that depends on their income.
Fair enough. That's your question?
Yeah.
Alright, so if there's a motion to approve it, I need for you to read the statement and findings.
I move that, oh, sorry. I move that a finding you made that all Williams County home secret applications have been reviewed by the city of Tyoka Board of Equalization and find them proper as presented and or corrected as noted in the minutes.
Also. Alright, with the motion and the second, if there's any questions, comments or concerns, we'll move to vote on that one.
Yes.
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 So those. Alright.
Perfect. Number fifteen is D A V credit, kind of the same situation. It depends on if you were discharged from the military with a disability um of fifty percent or more. And these are the four within the city of Tyoga.
Perfect. Same thing, again, if there's a motion, if you can please refund these.
I move that finding be made that all Williams County disabled veterans credit applications have been reviewed by the city entitled Board of Equalization and find them proper as presented or corrected and noted in the minutes.
Also, alright, with motion and second, if there is any questions, comments or concerns, we'll move to vote. Yes. The moves.
Sixteen is the privilege exemption. So this is churches, opportunity foundation, um, Ellis House and um. Boxing Community Connections, if I can get them, uh, get ahold of them to get the paperwork. And then the medical center has an exemption as well for reporting them there with the sort.
Alright, so with that, with that, um, because of the possibility of that one falling off, do you want? The motion as stands?
I would want the motion to stand so that you include boxing community connections if in the in in the case I get their application.
Perfect.
I do want you guys to approve of the fact. I'm sure I can get their application. I just haven't been able to get ahold of them yet, so.
Pardon?
It kind of fell through the cracks in the process.
For sure. So if there's a motion, if you can read the findings, please.
I move that a finding you made that the privilege exemptions from the state of Tyoga has been reviewed by the city of Tyoka Board of Equalization and find them proper as presented or corrected as noted in the minutes. Um, to include the boxing community connections as long as they see there.
Also. Alright, with the motion and the second to approve, there's any questions, comments or concerns, we'll move to vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Then we'll skip on over. So I included it just in case I actually had somebody um get ahold of me last minute. Um, but we did not have any actual formal protests that I received in my office. So we can skip to page twenty-three. And so these are a few corrections that I found after everything had been finalized, that I just need you guys to make motions on and make these changes. The first two are pretty simple. They are the city of Tyoga property. Um, and I inadvertently put an assessment on them and just made them move back down to zero because they aren't mapped completely. And then Rachel Vincent is the property there on Main Street that I saw the article in the newspaper about. And felt the need to make some corrections on her property for the basement and those types of things. So that is her correction today. If you want to approve all three, you can certainly read the findings and motions at the bottom. If you do not want to approve. Any one of them, you can certainly exclude them within that findings and motions.
Alright, so if there's a motion, read the findings and describe as you wish.
I move that twenty twenty-three true and full values and correction items, number one, three, list of all that noted in minutes, we have just.
Awesome.
Alright, with a motion and a second, if there is any questions, comments or concerns, we'll move to vote. If, yes. The moves.
Okay, and then our very last page is just the final proceedings. I need each line read and then a motion. If you're ready to finalize your assessments today.
I move that a finding you made that all qualifications of property have been reviewed and find them proper as assessed or corrected as noted in the minutes.
Second. Can I uh? Can we do the voting at the very end or each one?
It's concluded to you.
I will just do each one. Alright, with the motion and the second, if there is any questions, comments or concerns for that one, we'll move to vote.
Yes.
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 The vote.
I move that a finding made that we have reviewed, reviewed all the exemption applications and home state credit applications and find them proper as presented or corrected as noted in the.
Also. Alright, with motion and a second, if there are any questions, comments or concerns, we'll move to vote.
Yes.
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 The moves.
I move that a finding you made that the overall assessment role of the city of Tyoka number twenty twenty-three has been reviewed and find it proper as assessed or corrected as noted in the minutes.
Also. Alright, with the motion and a second, if there is any questions, comments or concerns, we'll move to vote.
Yes.
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 The moves.
I move based on proceeding findings, we need clarity assessment over twenty twenty-three for the city of Tyoga equalized.
Also. Alright, with the motion and second, no questions, comments or concerns, we'll move to vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Method. Thank you guys so much. I appreciate it.
Alright, for this meeting, that appeared to be the only thing on the agenda. Um, is there a motion to put down? Alright, with a motion and a second to adjourn, no questions, comments, concerns, we'll move to vote.
Yes.
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 A meeting is adjourned at six eleven.